We now come to order and the chair calls on the city clerk for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Yep.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene and gather today. Father, we thank you for the privilege to serve for God. And we ask that you would continue to cover us and keep us as a city, Father, as individuals. We ask that you would grant us the wisdom to make good, sound decisions, Father God, in keeping in mind the needs and the desires of those who we represent and serve. Father God, we ask that you would not only grant us wisdom, but compassion, Father God, in dealing with all of those that we represent and through it all, Father, we will continue to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise for it's in Jesus' name. We ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on June the 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of May the 30th through June the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation.
She's not here yet.
She's not here yet?
No.
Okay, well we'll...
Mr. President, I know we're going to be getting into another discussion here in a few minutes, but if she comes in, I'd ask that we suspend the discussion so Mr. Ellison can go ahead and do the proclamation because he's got a conference call he needs to get to.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
This, next is an ordinance adopting smoke-free air ordinance. Last week, the ordinance was tabled for seven days. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance that was presented last week.
Second.
We had a motion in a second. If you can tell us what it is.
Yes, sir, I do. As you know, we discussed several issues on last week that we wanted to go back and include or exclude, but we did do that in this one that you have now before you. It has equalized the footage from, I think we had seven, 20, and 30, and it equalized everything to 20. And I just see the young lady coming in that we need to do the proclamation, so why don't we just stop at this point and do that, and then we can get back into our discussion, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Denmark, if you can come up, he's going to do the proclamation.
Hello.
Over there.
Come right over here. If you want to stand right here, face the audience. Just here. I have a proclamation today on behalf of the mayor. Whereas Kim Denmark has walked almost 5,000 miles in 16 states for the purpose of raising awareness for the homeless, she began her journey 104 months ago in her home state of Ohio and has talked to many homeless persons across the country during her walk. And whereas Kim has been engaged in Alabama now for a few days and plans to continue her walk to Atlanta, Georgia, and eventually to Washington, DC. And whereas Ms. Denmark hopes to meet with President Barack Obama and speak to Congress regarding her plan to help the homeless, she has collected 20,000 signatures on a petition she wishes to present. And whereas Ms. Denmark has been able to help some families and individuals from becoming homeless by talking to officials in the towns she has visited when she has been asked to help. She also talks to the homeless about what they can do to change their situation and challenges them to do something. Now, therefore, Sherman Guyton, mayor, and the city council, the city of Gadsden, Alabama, hereby join in proclaiming Tuesday, June 10th, 2014, as Kim Denmark Day in the city of Gadsden and extend best wishes for her endeavors in raising awareness of homelessness in communities throughout our nation.
Good morning, everyone. And please give regards to the mayor. My name is Kim Denmark, and I just would like to say, it is an honor. It is a privilege to be in the wonderful city of Gadsden, Alabama. And of course, this will go on my Facebook page, so you'll be seen across America. I'm so honored to know that I am welcome here and that I was stopped on Sunday. I was walking down US 11 North, which is 278 East, and I got really thirsty, so I went into a Shell gas station to get something to drink, and I was counting out change, and someone reached their hand over me and handed me a business card with a $20 donation. And I looked at the card, and it said, "Robert Avery, City of Gadsden." And he said to me, "Where are you staying tonight? Do you have a bed?" And I said, "No." And he put me to bed, and I stayed at the Gadsden Inn for the last two nights. And guys, it's like heaven. It's like heaven. If I could take just one moment and explain what happened to me, why I am walking across the nation. I was a business owner in Ohio, successful staffing agency, made a lot of money, but I had a very bad attitude. I was very arrogant. I was very quote-unquote nasty to people. And when people would approach me for help, I was too busy, or I turned my head, or I simply flat-out told them no. I was so arrogant. And then I would go to church, and I only went to church to show off my clothes and my fancy car. And you know, when I think about it now, what happened to me had to happen. I became very ill, and in my sickness, I was given a second chance. It took me going to my bed, to my deathbed, to realize, it's not about me. It's not about me. And I was given a second chance, and in lure of that, I repented, and I asked God, what to do now? And it was laid on my heart to simply walk for the very people I abused and stepped on, to walk for that homeless man that I threw change at, for that young lady who came to me and just needed extra money for diapers. I'm walking for her. And then that homeless individual nobody knows about, that's a drunk and dirty and fingernails and just really gross, he's a soldier. All my research and all my data, if I interviewed 12 people, six of those people served in the United States military. And I said, "God, them, they are the ones that are keeping me in this country." And so from then on, I've taken my hat off, and I'm walking not just for the homeless, but the homeless veterans, because without them, where would we be? I didn't mean to be so long, but I did want to say, it has been 16 states, 4,990 miles, 27 pair of shoes, two pair of winter boots where they just rot off your feet, through the mountains, through the winter, the spring, the summer, the fall, people throwing things at you because they don't understand, people spitting at you, and you just have to smile and keep walking. I want you all to know, I love you. I'm going to DC to introduce some possible legislation as it relates to a facility. Took me two years to build on paper. Pray that the administration listens to my data and my research in trying to implement some changes I would like to see and some addendums I'd like to see. I thank you for this proclamation. And I hold it dear to my heart, and I ask each and every one of you, choose to do something in your community. You already are, and I thank you for that. I love you, and God bless you all, the city of Gadsden.
Jim?
God bless you.
They told me I can shake your hand.
Yeah. We need to get a copy of the petition, someone wants to sign it.
Okay.
Okay. Good girls.
Thank you.
You know, my wife and I saw Kim walking down Megan Boulevard on Sunday, and it bought back to me 50 years ago. And I didn't tell Kim about that, but thank you.
Okay.
Um, getting back to the amendment, we took out and we made everything 20 days equal. We also took out the enforcement for the building department. We took out tobacco shops, and I'm missing one other.
Effective date.
Oh, yeah, the effective date. We moved the effective date to January 1, which is the end of the permits or the business licenses for these businesses. And council members, we just had another one as we looked at. If you'll turn to page, I mean, section E, I'm not sure what page that is, but it's section E, on the regulation of smoking ordinance in public places. We also want to, I got with the city attorney because the language was not clear about outside smoking places that would be established, so I also want to change that to say that smoking shall be allowed in outside areas designated as a smoking area, but no service of food or beverages shall be provided. And that's the way number two should read. So with those changes is my amendment.
Okay, is any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote on the amendment?
Okay, we have a motion in second to make these amendments. Those in favor of accepting the...
Roll call, please.
Okay. Let me get my little list here so I called the names correctly. Now, this is on the amendment itself, to accept the amendments or not. Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Eccles?
This is just for the amendment.
This is on whether to... Right. This is whether to accept the amendment that has been offered.
He said yes, and I say yes.
Okay, yes and yes. Reed, yes, okay. The motion carries to accept the amendments that have been offered to the ordinance.
Now, we need to vote on the ordinance itself. What's the pleasure of the council?
Is there movement?
Have we got a motion in a second?
No, we don't. Oh, make a motion we approve, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. With the amendment. With the amendment.
With the amendment.
The motion would actually be to adopt the ordinance as amended.
As amended, yes.
As amended. I make a motion, we table this indefinitely since it's not going to affect till next January, so I make a motion, we table this indefinitely. You don't have a second?
I have a second. You got a second? Roll call.
This is on the motion to table?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Harris?
No.
Let me get my, make sure I'm getting my... Okay, Councilman Williams?
No.
Avery?
No.
Eccles?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
Cannon is absent. Reed?
No.
No. Motion does not carry for the indefinite table.
Okay, now, we got a motion in a second for the...
We go back to our main motion of adopting the ordinance as amended.
As amended, yes.
Okay. So this is on the adoption.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Cannon is absent. Councilman Stewart?
No.
Eccles?
I'm staying.
Avery?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Next item is yours.
Okay, being an ordinance amending city code section 74 through 91, it adds certain business license classification codes. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and it adds the following classification codes and their fee to the business license schedule. Phone product manufacturing, gold recovering, non-ferrous metal production, waste grease, promoters of performing arts, sports, and so forth, petting zoo, car wash, independent Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think it's just some house cleaning.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
See as a resolution authoring abatement of nuisance on property at 1175 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3. The last known owner is Margaret W. Milner. This resolution was tabled for seven days last week. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, this family has obtained a demolition permit, so I'd ask for a 30-day... Well, I'd just ask for an indefinite table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution indefinitely, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of the resolution authoring abatement of nuisance on property located at 1130 Shell Road in District 1. The last known owners are Stanley B. Cox and Janice Cox. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the building department. This case involves a burned house. The owner did take out a demolition permit October of last year. Unfortunately, there's been little or no work done on that permit. We're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance. We will, on behalf of the owner, honor that demolition permit if he can get it down by the time Public Works gets out there, if a resolution's passed today, and that could be several months.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of it? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 10 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Turtle Island Native American Association. This is use of the park area in Nakalua Falls for the powwow to be held August 30th through 31st. The association will pay $500 for the permit. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, are there any new businesses?
Thank you.
Department of Commerce, committee, boards are there? March by the mayor and the council? Billy?
Yes, Mr. President. This, what you've seen today is the culmination of an effort that has been put forward by your city council to represent the citizens in the city of Gadsden. There are pros and cons, and there are pros and cons in everything that we do. There are people who are far and who are against any and everything that we do, but we hope that, serving as your council, that we have done the best thing for the city of Gadsden, the citizens of the city of Gadsden. And those that, those that do not favor what we have done, then just let it be known, you know, that it will become law, you know, come January, and, you know, respect it and obey this ordinance as you would any other ordinance that has been passed by this city, any other state laws that are there, and any other national laws. Respect it, and I think with you and I and everybody in the city of Gadsden, we'll be all right. That's all I have.
David?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick point regarding the smoking ordinance. I want to, I thank people for respectfully addressing and presenting their concerns. I don't, I don't think this was at any level a overheated discussion, which is something that I'm always a proponent of, whether you're for or against. So I definitely appreciate that. I can tell you that I think what we have in terms of this ordinance represents a balanced approach, as I've been asking for since the beginning. I think it represents a pragmatic approach because again, it looks at how it's going to evolve over the years, and it looks at it from a practical standpoint. And again, I think it was void of any rhetoric, political rhetoric, and, or at least I think it's void of any political rhetoric or of any hyper-emotionalism. None of those things don't help us as we're trying to pull together law and pull together these kinds of things. So, and one of the things I'm proudest of, you know, whether you're for or against it, because I definitely understand the concerns that were presented by some of the, some members of the business community, but I think one of the things I'm proudest of is that at the 11th hour, there was some concern giving to the smoking areas and the patios. And it was balanced because it not only accounted for the impact that it might have on businesses, but it also accounted for the exposure item as raised to those who are called on to serve those people in those areas. So again, it's not perfect by any stretch. You know, I said that last week, and I'll continue to say that, but I think it is practical, and I think it's balanced to some degree. And I appreciate this council for addressing it. And whether you voted for or against it, I appreciate this council for being open to the discussion. And lastly, I want to, you often hear me say that, you know, one of the things I'm proudest of as an individual in terms of my individual development is the fact that it's very rare that I go somewhere in this city where I don't see one of my mothers in a neighborhood or a community. And so here today, Ms. Weatherly is here from East Gadsden. She's one of my many mothers, and she's still as beautiful as she was 20 years ago, and I always appreciate her coming out and supporting me. And one of the things I can always look forward to is when she sees me, she tells me, "I saw you on TV. I saw you on TV." And I appreciate her watching and supporting me. So glad to have you here, Ms. Weatherly. That's all, Mr. President.
See, I got more mothers than you got, because I've been around longer than you. There's several of them in the audience, too, and I won't start pointing now because I'll be pointing all day. But I will say very little about the ordinance. I think we did pass, and it's passed. I see Ms. Denmark has left. You know, like I said earlier, I still haven't shared my story with Ms. Denmark. You know, I just saw her walking, my wife and I, and when we pulled into the store, she was in the process of trying to find some change to pay for her tea. And I just put the $20 up there and told the young lady I would pay for it, and then I gave her my card, and asked if there's any way I could help her, I would be glad to. Because like I said, it reminded me of myself some 50 years ago when we were on our escapade from here to Washington for a cause. And I support anybody who feels strongly enough about a cause, that, you know, they have that right. And that's what she was saying earlier about the veterans. They fought and they died for us to have that right to express our concerns and our convictions. Sometimes I don't agree with some people's convictions, but I do agree with they have the right to express that. And so anytime I see anybody feel that strong about something, I had to give her a hand, and so nothing unusual. Again, we've got several things that are coming up, and I know Mr. Cannon is not here, who normally talk about the election. We've got a city election coming in the next couple of months. This council will also have to deal with the issue of seven-day sales. And I'm asking the city attorney, I don't know if you've been requested to draw something up, I think this council has to pass a resolution adding that to the ballot, and so I'm asking publicly that if you will draw that up so we can act on that as soon as possible. I don't want to wait till the last minute. I'm not sure what our timeframe is in getting things put on the ballot. Ms. Clerk, is there a timeframe that we have to do that in?
I believe there's an advertising requirement for weeks, I believe, so just as long as we have adequate time to get that done.
Okay, I do know that the deadline for qualifying is the 15th of July, and the ballots will probably be printed up soon thereafter. So we need to get that resolution before the council as soon as possible, I would think. So I'm asking, I hope this council is asking. I think we need two people to ask. Okay. Okay, then that's enough people to ask, so if you'll get that ready for us, Mr. Attorney, we would appreciate it. That's all I have.
I abstained from voting because most of the people in my district, nearly all of them that I talked to, thought what we had was good enough. So I've got COPD, I smoked, I'm paying for it now, and, but there were some things in there that I don't think can be enforced. Anyway, it's passed, and I'll abide by it. Bill?
Well, as you see, this council doesn't always agree on every issue, but I respect the right of every council member to vote their convictions, and I think that's what we do. Once we voted on an issue and it's settled, then we move on to something else. There won't be any of this, "I told you so." You know, we made our decision, and we'll move on now. That's it.
Okay. I'll still have lunch with you. If you're buying.
I bought last time.
Oh, that's right, you bought last time. Well, Billy can buy this time. Okay. I was sitting here thinking about what Robert said. I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force and the United States Navy. I'm on the board of directors at the Gads...
I'm on the board of directors at the Gadsnettlewell Patriots Association, as is my friend, Billy Harris. But I think the proudest thing that I've seen lately, we had a roadblock, Hood Avenue and East Broad Street, Saturday. And every car just about that came by there rolled that window down and gave money to the Patriots Association, to the veterans, and to just what Ms. Denmark was talking about, to the homeless, to the vets who need their grass cut, to the vets that need whatever their needs are, their tombstones being put down, whatever. But the main thing was the museum, and this is a little bit lighter, at the museum at Nakalulip Park. Have any of y'all been up there? Do you know what I'm talking about? We have built a museum to all veterans. All veterans. It's a beautiful place. And the money, that's where the money's going. Of course, Billy knows and everybody else. The flags you see on Albert Raines Boulevard and Megan Boulevard and everywhere in town, that's us. That's what we do. But we would respectfully ask you, as we ask the people on Hood Avenue, to contribute to the Olamiz Patriot Park, to that museum, and to donate or put on loan anything that you have from any war, any peace, any letter, anything of value to you would be of value to us, really. Billy, I don't know whether you had anything to say on that or not, but-
Yeah. You know, now that Ben has mentioned that, I'll say this. I'm a Vietnam combat veteran and there's nothing that I've ever done in my life that I am more proud of than having served during that time. Nothing that I've done.
Absolutely.
And the great thing about it is I came home, you know, partially sane, you know, I don't have it all, don't have it all, but I, you know, I got back home and there was so-
I'm glad you said partially.
Oh, I admit that. I just wish we all would admit that, you know, we fall short sometimes. All of us. Well-
He left here that way.
Every shit I left here that way. They didn't have too much to do, you know, just to push me on over the edge.
Hey, Billy, they're still checking on me.
Well, and trust me, you know, Ben and I, we're both, I think Bill, Derek, veteran, you know, we're proud of the fact that we've served in the military. And the thing that hurts me most, Ben, these days is, because we know the problems that we're having with our veteran, the VA and our veterans and the attention that they're getting, well, let me say, that they did not get, that they have not gotten over the years. But trust me, buddy, those veterans who have been denied will get some attention now after heads roll and after things get straightened out and people understand that we have wronged so many veterans in this country. And there are so many of them that are homeless, you know, we got, Ben has a place in Pearl City that we have veterans there, you know. It's just a wonderful thing. And we do everything we can to support the veterans, the citizens, the patriots of these, of this country and this city. So we thank you. We thank you. Continue to support the Olamiz Monument, you know, at Nakalulip Falls. And it's a beautiful, if you haven't been up there, go visit. It's just getting better and better each month as we add more to the monument. But thank you for your participation.
Let me close by thanking the workers and thank the people that came by and they know who they are. It was great, everything. They stopped and talked to us and it was absolutely great and we appreciate it so much.
Yeah, I see Ms. Denmark just come back in. I was sharing with them a few minutes ago. I never shared with you about my story. And I will tell her my story. But I just wanted to publicly let her know that myself, two other guys, almost 51 years ago, hitchhiked from here to Washington. So we'll talk about it afterwards. All right.
Mr. President, may I make one other statement? And this has nothing to do with your city council or anything in the city. It's about being, it's about being considerate of other people. It's about being considerate of your fellow Gadsdenites. Jenny and I, well, most of you know, pretty much on Fridays, you know, I have one particular place that I go for my lunch on Fridays and I drive through the drive-thru. Heck, it's Chick-fil-A. And I go through Chick-fil-A and I get in the line. And this past Friday, the line was back, all the way back out to that little street where you enter in. And it's always that way at lunchtime. But I was in the line there and, you know, when you come around the back of Chick-fil-A, you can't get it, you have to, you really can't get into that line if you come in from another entrance off Fourth Street or someplace. Yes, you can't get into that line. So I was there and, you know, there were six or eight cars behind me and I was at the street. And this little lady was in this car trying to get in. Well, you know, I'm sitting there, I'm saying, "Wait a minute, I'm hungry, you know. I don't need to let nobody else in front of me, I am hungry." But then, you know, something, you know, something reversed that decision, you know, and I said, "Come on in," you know. And the lady got in and, you know, it took us 10 minutes to get to the order line. And when I got there and placed my order and I got to the window, you know, the lady said, "Do you need the thing else?" I said, "No." And I was trying to pass her my money. I said, "Here, this is my money." I know how much it is, a $6.46. I get it every Friday, so I know. And I was trying to give her the money and she said, "Oh, no, no, no. The lady in front of you has paid for your lunch." So those are the kind of things you reap, you know, when you're considerate of other people. And I was shocked. I came in City Hall, I was just talking and bragging about it. I was thrilled to death. And it made me think that we all should try to do something for someone like that every now and then. Just makes for a better world. I'm off my soapbox now.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak for the third time?
He's making me hungry, this lady.